On June 14th, 2022, we will proceed with our public hearings. We have announced two public hearings for this evening. One in regards to ordinance number 25-2022. This is the City of Greer Budget Ordinance for the fiscal year 2022 and 2023. We also have this evening ordinance number 28-2022. This is an ordinance authorizing the closure of a portion of Parker Street. The first item before us this evening is ordinance number 2025-2022. The City of Greer Budget Ordinance. It's an ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations therefore levying taxes and to provide for an effective date. I will offer you three opportunities to speak in regards to the ordinance. By show of hand, if you would like to address counsel in regards to ordinance number 25-2022, please indicate so by raising your hand. The City of Greer Budget Ordinance for the fiscal year 2022 through 2023. If you would like to speak, indicate so by raising your hand. And a third and final call. This is your last opportunity to speak in regards to ordinance number 25-2022. The City of Greer Budget Ordinance, fiscal year 2022, 2023. An ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations therefore levying taxes and to provide for an effective date. If you would like to speak to ordinance number 25-2022, please indicate by raising your The record will show that no one asked for the opportunity to speak in the public hearing regarding ordinance number 25-2022. Same procedure will follow for ordinance number 28-2022. This is an ordinance authorizing the closure of a portion of Parker Street. Tonight is the public hearing for the ordinance. As you will note, there's not a action to be taken later in the meeting in this regard. For 28th Act 2022, this is the ordinance authorizing the closure of a portion of Parker Street. If you would like to address counsel, please indicate so by raising your hand. I will offer a second time in regards to ordinance number 28-2022. Would you like to speak to this matter? If so, raise your hand. And a third and final time, your last opportunity to speak in regards to ordinance number 28-2022. This is an ordinance authorizing the closure of a portion of Parker Street. If so, if you would like to speak in this regard, please raise your hand. Seeing none, the records here also indicate that no one spoke in regards to ordinance number 28-2022. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilman Lee Dumas, if you would, to lead us in a pledge of allegiance and then an invocation for counsel. Please stand.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this great day that you've given us and this opportunity for our city council to gather here together. Thank you for this great city, for those that serve this city and those that live here. Lead, guide, and direct us tonight, help us to do what's pleasing in your sight. In Christ's name, amen.
Again, we welcome you and thank you for joining us this evening for what is going to be a full agenda. We appreciate your indulgence in that regard and we'll move forward with the agenda as presented. We have set aside time for a public forum. Ms. Duncan, anybody ask to speak in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that, then, counsel, let's move to the minutes of the council meeting. You have in your packets the minutes from the May 24th, 2022 meeting. I'll entertain a motion that they be received. And a second. Any items to note for the clerk? Hearing now, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Next item before us this evening is the administrator's report. Mr. Merriman.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you. Few things I want to mention. First, I want to congratulate counsel. This is the first time I've seen y'all on closing on the property at the corner of Country Club and Gap Creek Road adjacent to the golf course. We've been discussing that, I think, for a little over a year now. We were finally able to close the deal on that and annex, or excuse me, purchase 72-plus acres in one parcel and then another nine in the other parcel. But it's a major coup, I think, for the city to get a hold of this property and turn it into what I know will be a fantastic recreational and open space resource for years to come. So you will be seeing that come through, counsel, and planning commission as part of our normal procedures to annex and zone those properties. But for y'all and for the staff that worked so hard on making that happen, congratulations. I do want to recognize Deputy Chief Holzheimer today. He is shaking his head and looking at me disdainfully, but he is the president of the South Carolina Firefighters Association. No small accomplishment and no small credentialing. So Josh, congratulations. Thank you very much. I also want to say, give a shout out to our Public Services Department. Friday, we did something a little bit different and I think that it was met with significant amount of success. But if you'll notice, if you look around town, sometimes we see a lot of what I like to call litter, a lot of people call roadside signs. But it becomes more and more of a problem as we grow with people putting things into the right of way. Well, our folks in Public Services got a quick lesson from Brandon on what can and can't be taken. So Brandon McMahon kind of gave a illegal signs 101 crash course to our guys. They took off Friday afternoon and collected 375 illegal signs that were placed either on poles or in right of way throughout the city. So to our folks in Public Services, well done because it's going to take all of us to keep this city clean. So thank you very much, guys. And just by way of some updates for calendar events, Wednesday, June 15th tomorrow, we're hosting the Stop the Violence Youth Summit in the Cannon Center with a native speaker here from Greer and philanthropist, a gentleman by the name of Ishmael Latif. Reminder that Week Two of Moonlight Movies is Thursday at 7:00 PM. The Police Department on Friday will be hosting the Krama Cruiser PD Drive, which they will be collecting non-perishable food items for local nonprofits. This will be located at the Food Lion at 1365 West White Hampton. Saturday, we will have Toons in the Park. This is the second of our four in this series. Is that right? Five. Five, thank you. The Jamie Wright Band will be playing in the amphitheater on Saturday night starting at 7:00. Another spotlight for a staff member I'd like to point out is for Ruthie. On Thursday, the 23rd, the National Association of Women in Construction will be hosting a meeting and spotlighting our own Mrs. Hounds. And then, of course, Freedom Blast on the 25th, as you can see, your t-shirts are in front of you, and staff has been working diligently on making sure that gets pulled off without a hitch. Finally, one thing I would like to do that I don't normally do, but I think because this person takes a very public role in a number of things that we're doing, I'd like to introduce Ayla Fitzpatrick. Ayla is our new community and media outreach coordinator, and we were able to lure her away from WSPA about two months ago, I think now. Is that about right? Is that how long you've been with us? But you will see her, she has actually got us a TikTok account now, which she is trying to get me to participate in, and I'm not overly excited about. But so many of the things from a transparency standpoint, from a messaging standpoint, just making sure that we are communicating with not just our partners in the media, but our community and our community leaders that have a liaison and a person to go to with some issues or to get information out. Ayla and Steve with Communications Team are going to work very hard in making sure that we get that done. Mr. Mayor, that actually probably sets a record for the longest administrator's report that I've got, but it is summertime and I wanted to make sure we got a lot of stuff covered. So that's it.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, next item before us this evening is appointments in boards and commissions. We have two of those, one on Board of Architectural Review and the other at the Greenville-Spartanburg International Airport Environs Planning Commission. I'm going to ask counsel if you will allow me to hold these over to our next meeting. I checked, there's not a scheduled BAR meeting coming up, and I do not, I'm not aware of one on the environs side as well. I'm going to be talking to you about both of those positions in the coming days and weeks ahead, and we will put those on another upcoming meeting, even though they are ending here at the end of this month. I believe we've got the time to take some time in regards to these appointments. And so if that suits with counsel, I'll ask this item to be held over. With that, then, we will move to items of old business, the first of which is the second and final reading of ordinance number 25-2022. This is the City of Greer Budget Ordinance, fiscal year 2022, 23. An ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations therefore levying taxes and to provide for an effective date. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
I'll make that motion with an amendment that we strike or do away with the increase in the stormwater fee.
Have a motion and an amendment which in regards to the stormwater fee, striking the stormwater fee from the ordinance. Do I hear a second? Floor is open for discussion in regards to the amended motion.
I just believe that increasing the stormwater fee, especially on the businesses by 20% is just, it's too much, especially now with inflation. And then that is just going to translate into inflation passed on to their customers. And I don't think it would, I don't think it harms the city at all if that is, I'm not saying that I'm against it, that there are, there are projects out there that we need to do. I know we are in the planning stages of doing some major projects, but I don't think that's going to negatively impact anything if we hold it, hold that increase for another budget cycle.
So how much money are we talking about here?
The anticipated increase would take us from $25 to $30 annually.
I mean, overall on a budget? How much effect on the budget?
That takes, David, I'm going to look to you to pull up that, whatever, well, it actually would add 20% to what you had.
225.
The increase dollar-wise on the, is it ERU?
Equivalent residential unit.
Right. For the residences, although it's 20%, it's only $5. But commercial, anything except a residence has more than one ERU. So it could be fairly significant for property owners, business owners, that kind of thing.
I can go along with that. Since I have quite a few condominiums, townhomes in my area, that they, they have to pay like twice for the stormwater fee. They pay for the driveway in front of their home, and then they also pay for the surrounding areas. I know we discussed that quite a few times, and I guess what it is, it's billed to their homeowners association, and then that's collected from the residents. That's my understanding, like at Riverside Towns and Hemet Farms, the different areas like that.
Is that true? That doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yeah, discuss it. Ever since I've been on here, quite a few times, but they always said that that's the way it had to be. It's covered with concrete and paving that's around the back areas.
The only thing I, without verifying now, the only thing I can think of is the common open space owned by the HOA that's not owned by an individual property owner, that would make sense. Yes.
I guess that's what is their property, and so they're actually built through the city and then built through their agency.
Yes.
To pay that extra stormwater.
I would assume the residence owner would pay their one ERU for the rooftop, and then the HOA would pay for the impervious areas surrounding the construction.
Yeah, that's probably true, but in other words, they are still paying that, they're still paying the stormwater fee twice.
It would be the same, it's the same scenario as someone who rents. They just don't see it broken down because that's going to be factored into their rent. And you know, some of our apartment complexes that we have now, rather large.
Well, and I would say that any single-family resident or any single-family neighborhood, you'd be in the same boat. You'd have an individual resident paying their impact of $20 annually, and then the HOA would be separately billed for the clubhouse or the pool or whatever, for common space, et cetera. It is a separate ERU impact.
Mr. Mayor, can you give us an idea of these businesses that we're thinking of that have a bigger dollar impact that way? What would that look like? Can you give us an example of?
Maybe Steve, can you help us with one? Or what do we pay?
We pay about $80,000 a year.
With, for this, all the city's properties, it's about, for everything, for our impact, City Hall, Cannon Center, fill in the blanks, all city properties somewhere, whatever that number is, but let's just say it's 80 grand, it's substantial.
16 more thousand dollars.
Effectively. But we make an impact on the larger stormwater system as well.
I'm not saying that I am against stormwater management.
Sure.
Please don't misunderstand me. I'm just saying, I don't think it's the appropriate time to do that because of the economy, the inflation, and, and to a certain extent, we have been talking about mapping our stormwater system, and I know we have finally contracted with somebody to do that, but we have, we have talked about that for multiple years, and that was one of the reasons that we decided to, or that it was placed into the budget to help pay for that, but you know, it's just, to me, it's not the right time.
Is that where the dollars are going to be dedicated to the stormwater mapping? Is that?
So what we've, what we've been doing, yes, sir, I mean, in this particular case, the dollars that we've collected to date will be used for that project, which would actually be a multi-year endeavor. But what happens is you spend that fund balance down, then our ability to fund any other projects is slowed down because of our ability to build that fund balance back up to put it into projects. That's what this is designed to do, is to catch us up because we are behind the eight ball from a stormwater standpoint. So if what, if what we can do is get these projects started, get them funded out of what we've got existing in fund balance, replenish that and continually having a pot of money to continue doing projects.
Is that 200,000, like the gap, or the delta number, is that 200,000 total?
That would be what we would collect in addition to what we're collecting. Yes, sir.
Now, I know we're doing, now, I know we're doing a stormwater study with a consultant, and I know there's some EPA money out there for grants and things. Have they talked any about anticipated numbers of possibly getting that funding? If we delay this, possibly covering for the next few years or?
No, sir, I don't think we've been engaged in any earnest conversations regarding potential grant money or any kind of federal funds that may come down to support that.
So if we, if we do the increase, where does that leave us? I know we were very low compared to other places. I think I asked this before, where does that leave us?
So Sensiville, Malden, and Easley are slightly higher than we are. Sensiville, Malden at 2565, Easley at 28, and then the next one would be Sumter at $30, and we would be at $30.
And what is the county rate?
I don't know what the county charges. What I've got is municipal charge, municipal counterparts here. I don't know what the county's.
Historically, the county's been lower. No, 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 it's been higher.
Okay, so Mike just confirmed it's 2565, same as Sensiville.
And all the municipalities have their own programs?
Mm-hmm.
It didn't used to be that.
Well, I think, and Steve, if I get out of line here, you tell me, but what you've got is, once you, once the city reached a certain population threshold, they were required to engage in stormwater management. And once you hit that population threshold, which actually was a sliding scale, if I'm not mistaken, that the longer time went on, the less population you had, you had to engage in stormwater management. And so that was, started out with fewer city of 100,000 people, and this was, gosh, 10, 12 years ago, but then they would lower that threshold over a certain amount of time.
I think one of the things that would concern me in the long run, and I agree, there's, there's times we need to be sensitive to inflation and times that, you know, but there's never a good time to raise a tax or a fee. You know, we've been talking about the mapping for a long period of time, but I think one of the things that we tend to forget is the use of the stormwater fund. And while that is certainly in foremost to address water quality issues and management issues in their purest regard, we also utilize that fund in a lot of other different ways which benefit our community, i.e., the money that we spent, or a large portion of the money that we spent on Kids Planet was stormwater money. We use the stormwater money here. We use stormwater money for trails and other different things. And with, excuse me, with the addition of the new land and golf course, there's not ever going to be a time where the stormwater fund is not going to be important to us. And while this may be a tight year for, for an increase, we have no assurance that next year is not going to be even tighter. So I think I would, I would lean towards going ahead and supporting it this year. Others?
Are we relating only to stormwater this time?
Yes, ma'am. The motion was specifically to remove the recommended increase in the stormwater fund.
Comments?
So are we going to discuss the budget then, or do we kind of leave that to the other?
So, go ahead, Mayor. Well, there's a motion and a second on the floor, so what you'll need to do is, is address that before we move on to the general budget discussion.
And an affirmative vote is a yes for the removal of the?
For the removal. Others? Questions? Comments? Additional discussion? Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
No.
Mr. Dumas?
No.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
With that, then, we will move then to, as that motion fails, we will move into the second and final reading of ordinance number 25-2022. This is the City of Greer Budget Ordinance, fiscal year 2022, 23. An ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations therefore levying taxes and to provide for an effective date. I'll entertain a motion that that be received for discussion. So move. And a second. Second. Floor is now open for discussion.
Okay, the main objection I had on the budget was the increase in the sanitation. We're taking away one item and increasing, and to me, I don't, I realize that we have always spent a lot over and above what the sanitation company charges and what we charge per item. And I do realize that the services that our citizens get compared to your private trash pickups and all is substantially a lot more with removing the things that they do move. That's my opinion. It's been a long time since that private service, so anyway. So that's my opinion on that. But however, I think that, to me, when I look at them taking away, and I'm having trouble with them removing the recycling, you know, that's fine. Like most other people, we'll take it to the Muggin Street or wherever. I know that there's other places set up that recycle as well. But when I think about taking the responsibility away from the sanitation company of picking up that extra trash container of these recyclable items, to me, that, because they do it in two different trucks, to me, that would eliminate the going of the truck, and it would eliminate, I'm sure they don't just take everything and just dump it in one big container and ship it someplace, that they do have to sort through it in some items to remove what shouldn't be in there and so forth. So to me, it seems like it's taking away some responsibilities and some expenses that the sanitation company is incurring. Now, I could definitely be all wrong on that, but as a citizen, that's kind of the way I look at it.
And I think in that regard, we may want some additional clarification because this is, this is, this is just one of those issues where, you know, some total of what is taking place doesn't seem to equal the rest of everything. Our original contract, and I'm going to let Andy take this in terms of a better description than what I can give you, but our original contract was for an amount that would increase on an annual basis, given approximate number of homes. We just have renegotiated a contract with the company that provides that service, and there was discussion in that about what it would look like with the recycling and without the recycling. And one of the things that we came to understand is that the recycling piece of it really didn't make financial sense in terms of what was taking place to your, sort of to your point. And then the number of residents that were using that service based on the total number of people in the city or homes that we served made that equation even harder to digest because of the additional cost of it. So you may want to talk a little bit about, about those negotiations with our provider and how we came to that decision about the recycling center and what's taking place there, the money that we'll be spending on that, and when that may be opening.
Yeah, so Ms. Albert, I think that's a valid question. It was certainly something that, you know, we debated that from a staff perspective, is this idea that, well, hang on a minute, you're going to increase the fees and remove a service that, it's illogical, and it doesn't, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. So we debated that, Mike and I had a couple kind of hearty debates about the way that works, but to give you an idea of what we are, we're facing here is actually, and we're close to finalizing the contract with Meridian. But, and it looks at this point where the contracted service with the removal of the recycling will actually be a savings to the rate payer, okay? So from the contract side, it will be a savings for them. Where we're running into the issue is actually the tipping fees at both landfill and where they process the recyclables. And that is something that's outside of the city's ability to, A, negotiate or B, control. So what ends up happening is this recommended increase of $20 is really more or less a pass along from fees that we get charged for the tonnage that we ship, either recycling or? for the tonnage that we ship either recycling or to municipal solid waste landfill. So it's, this is, this is a reflection of a kind of a net overall continued increase in the cost of providing that service. And for the last few years, for sure, um, maybe up to four or five, we've actually had to subsidize, uh, the, the solid waste fund out of the general fund. What we are hoping to get, and what we've calculated with this increase is will get us back even and be able to start paying the general fund back through the solid waste fund with this increase. I will say that it's, um, not ideal to, um, remove curbside recycling, and I know that that recycling tonnage is likely going to go down. However, we are still committed as financially reasonable to recycling in the City of Greer. So we, we are actually in the engineering process now of a complete overhaul of the convenience center over at Buncombe Street. That will be done. Um, we intend to staff it, and we intend to have a, um, a safe environment, uh, easily, easily accessible environment, and certainly a much better looking and cleaned up environment for folks to come and not only drop off any kind of municipal household waste that they may have, but to be able to sort and recycle. And theoretically, in doing so, you'd get a higher quality recyclable product than you would just curbside.
It's kind of feeling like that the biggest majority of people, the ones that have been recycling, because they have a container there just to put their things in instead of the trash, that everybody will just start taking everything and putting it in the trash. And that will cause the fees at the landfills and all.
Yes, and actually, we've actually calculated that. So with the known tonnage that we know that goes to recycling, we've actually applied that to what we can anticipate as an increase in regular MSW tonnage. And even with that tonnage being transferred over to MSW, it's still significantly cheaper to dump it than it is to send it through recycling.
Let's, let's make sure that everybody understands that we're not doing, that, that the recycling is being questioned not only because of the cost, but because I would say almost 100% of recyclables now go to the dump because there's no market?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the, I mean, and that's, that's not us, that's everybody. I mean, it, you know, um, the, the market's just overloaded. They're, they're not getting any prices. You know, we used, we used to recycle glass, and that went away because we were having to haul it and pay somebody to take it. And it's the same thing with everything else that we recycle now. It's just, it's still winding up in the landfill.
We were paying $80 a ton for the recycling?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five?
Seventy-five dollars.
Five for...
Forty-one for MSW.
Almost twice.
And that, and that forty-one went up from thirty-nine, thirty-eight, was it thirty-eight or thirty-nine? Thirty-nine, um, just through this last fiscal year. So that increase, again, was something that was passed on to us in the middle of a fiscal year that we didn't account for. So that was part of that leeching out of that, the general fund that we see happening. So those are, those are costs that we can't control, but we're subject to.
I'm very sympathetic to what Ms. Albert is saying. Understand, I think we all feel the same way in one form or another. For me, it boils down to, is there a cost-effective alternative to provide the same level and quality of service besides what we're talking about? My understanding is, no, there's not. It, it is what it is. The economics of the recycling are what they are. The economics of just the contract negotiation is what it is. And so we can not like it. I think we all don't love it, though we're having to, you know, at least for now, take this, take the curbside away. But there is no, what, what's the alternative? There is no alternative.
Well...
From a, from a, from a cost-effective quality of service standpoint.
That's right. Mr. Harper, I think, um, you, from, from our perspective, there is an alternative, which is a change in the recommendation for the increase from $20 to $48, because that's what we have calculated, the increase, not only the contract price, but what we know to be the tipping fees at $75 a ton.
Which for me, and I know my constituent, the vast majority of my constituents would not support that, for the usage that, that's there. Even the one, I'd, I'd say the ones who it's important enough to keep recycling, they're going to recycle. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense for me to pass on that extra $28, $28 in addition to the other $20, $20 to everybody in that situation.
Yeah, I can, I can agree with that. And like I said in the beginning, I have a problem with taking away, picking up the recyclables. It's just a fact of taking away the...
Yeah, I get it.
I, I think all of us, I think all of us do. And I, I think one of the things we've got to remember as well, too, because I know there's one, two, three, maybe four of us that remember when we, we started this journey with a private contractor. There was agreement among us council that, just like we subsidize a lot of our other programming, that we were going to do some substantive of, of the, of the garbage fee. And at that point in time, based on the number of homes and the growth rate that we had in the city, that number was not insignificant, but it was also not insurmountable as well, too. And, and we just kind of rocked along with that, with that number, while many of our neighbors kept raising, raising their rates. And, uh, you know, eventually it got to the point where we had to, we had to make some decisions about how we were going to continue to do that and how we were going to continue to fund it. I think what's happened, though, is that, in particularly in the last three to five years, when we have gone from 300 to 500 new home starts a year, we are now in the 1,000 to 1,500 range. And what happens is that we are adding new customers to our residential garbage system at such an incredibly fast rate. And depending on the, how those homes come online, uh, in terms of when they will receive their next tax bill, um, oftentimes exacerbates that gap between when somebody's actually paying for the service and, and when they're not, when they, when they get so many months free. So I, I think part of this has just been the fact that incrementally, at one point in time, the number in what was originally scheduled to be an enterprise fund, which we all know, we have the ability to, to be a little bit flexible on, was, was manageable. But now that number is growing so incrementally that we cannot afford at this point to let that number continue on for one, two, three, four, five years, because that number now is $400,000, $450,000. And if we keep allowing that number to multiply itself, then we've, then we've got a real issue. Others?
I will say that I have received several calls and disappointment about recycling program being removed. And I did let the folks know that we're not removing recycling, that it is going to be part of what we're doing, it just won't be curbside anymore. And so it's, it's still a priority to us. And I hope that we will, we will continue to revisit this if and when recyclable materials become, you know, that we actually can, you know, receive some money from it instead of having to pay them to pick it up. And that, like you're saying, that so much of it's ended up in our waste stream. I, I hope that we'll be sensitive to that. And if, if asked to revisit this in the future, that we'll listen to constituents and be, and be willing to pick it back up. Because I, I do suspect that there will be a, a good bit of pushback and feedback, you know, once the system shuts down, and then they realize we're not picking it up anymore. And, uh, I hope we'll listen and be sensitive to that. Because, um, yes, it's a $20 increase, and we could go to $48. I mean, so we're talking about an additional, what does that come out to be, like $4 a month or something like that, if we kept it going, um, with recycling. And, and to some people, it may be worth it. If it, uh, if our constituents say it is worth it for the city, then that's something I hope we'll listen to in the future. But for now, I, I understand the argument and will support it.
Others in regards to the budget?
I would just like to say, Mr. Mayor, that, um, and I've relayed this to, to our administrator. As you know, one of my sticking points every year is that, and I think it's a healthy measure of a company, which is what I consider the city, is your, is what your size of payroll and benefits is. And I, I always get back to what Mr. Drigger said, that we only have one product, and that service. And you have to have people to, to do that service. I understand that, and I understand that we're expanding, uh, fire, we have to expand police, and we have to expand other services. But what I, I don't want to see, and, and, and the amount of employees increases about 5% a year, historically, what I don't want to see is the city become this big, expensive, bureaucratic, um, money pit. Uh, and I would just, I would just ask in the future that we try and maximize our personnel, um, to get the, get the best bang for our buck. I think we have great benefits, and I'd like to continue that. I think that's a, that's a good thing, and it enables us to keep good people. But, uh, I, I don't think we can sustain a 5% employment increase every year. Just don't think so. And my benchmark is always 60%, and we've blown that out of the water, uh, according to what you sent me today, uh, the way, the way it was, was historically calculated. Uh, but I don't have a problem with what our budget does. Uh, I think we're always, uh, we have sticking points like, like garbage, but everybody does. That's just a, that's a moving target. But I think we're always very fiscally sound in what we do, uh, as far as spending our, our citizens' money wisely, and, and, and doing well with it, and, and maintaining it. I mean, you, you don't build a city hall like this and not maintain it. You've got to, you've got to pay that price. But, um, that's my only request, is that we be real cognizant of our costs, mainly in personnel and benefits going forward, um, but continue to be very precise in what we do with every dollar.
Yes, sir. I think we all, you know, I think one of the hallmarks of this, this council has been, um, a bent to, to physical conservatism. I, I think we've done an excellent job of maintaining a, a sense of balance in terms of the growth of the community with, with our budget and, uh, our commitment to building a reserve fund, uh, to help us through those times that, that may be up and down. And, um, to, to your point, whether it's, uh, personal finances or it's, uh, company finances, I believe we've done a, a good job in that regard. I think one of the things that we need to remember, and I, I'm proud to say this, is, you know, other than, uh, the tax millage that we added year before last at this point, last year, um, for, for the roads, um, this, this is a council that has, uh, has maintained a, a lengthy record of minimal changes in our millage. And, um, you know, that, that has, um, has been something to, that I think is a credit to this, to this council. And, you know, while we continue to collect more money every year, uh, that's, that's not a mandate that we ought to spend it, but I think we are, uh, I think we are spending it wisely and appropriately, because I think our citizens have an expectation that, uh, as we grow, that we will, while we should be prudent, that we also need to remember that if we're going to keep, um, you know, an appropriate number of police officers for our population, or firemen for our population, or recreation programs for our population, that, that we're going to have to spend money to do that. So, um, always a tight balancing act, and I am appreciative to, uh, to the administrator and staff for the, uh, for the budget they've come up with. Others? Comments or questions? Further discussion about different things?
Quick comment. Uh, uh, you know, we can pat our own backs as far as the council goes. I think you're exactly right. We've been, uh, very, I believe that we are, we know that we are stewards of the city's money, and we, I think that over the years, we've done a fine job. But I think we need to pat the backs of, um, the folks that are out there every day, all of our departments. Um, they, uh, they do a great job. Uh, they are asked to do more than show up and draw a paycheck, and they always do. Uh, just, you know, they, they just do a super job. Um, and they, you guys represent, um, this, I mean, you're the, the representation, you're the face of the city every day when you meet folks. And you all do, do a great job. I mean, I, you know, from the all the way to, you know, to the, on the recreation side, uh, courts, we, what I've always heard and I've always seen is we treat all of our visitors, our individuals, uh, that, that we come in contact with, is that, that we, I guess, the, we love them. And whether that's making them rest, or putting out a house fire, or hosting an event, um, down at the, at our arts center, it's, you know, do a great job.
Here, here. Thank you.
I would definitely appreciate that. I'm always proud of the employees that we have here.
Council, our first item of all business this evening was the second and final reading of ordinance number 25-2022. This was the City of Greer Budget Ordinance for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. Further comments, questions, or discussion in regards to ordinance number 25-2022?
One more thing. The other day, I had a chance to go over and visit with the folks at Greer Development, BMW Pro-Am. Thank you, Reno, for hosting that event, and had a lot of interesting conversations with a lot of really different, unique businesses. And so it seemed like we're really drumming up a lot of new business and, and hopefully bringing some of those into the city. And, and, uh, he's got a new program going with Ignite and with the platform, and some really innovative and, and different things that he's doing to, you know, try to support entrepreneurs and, and get people exposed to the city. And so appreciative, um, for what you're doing. And I did notice in the, in the budget that there was a pretty, a pretty big ask this time. You know, there's a, a pretty big increase for the economic development piece. Can, can you come and maybe speak to what you're doing and where you're going with that? And I'd love to hear. I'd love to hear what y'all wrote.
Certainly. Thank you. Uh, our economic development program is really based on four key principles. Uh, the first being business retention. Uh, what we do to work to make sure that the businesses that are here in Greer remain businesses here in Greer. And so we, uh, support a fully engaged business retention program that includes, uh, regular visits to our existing industries, uh, mining data information from them about their challenges and opportunities, and then solving those problems, uh, promoting those opportunities. Secondly, uh, new business recruiting. We have a pretty broad target base, uh, that includes a commercial and industrial, uh, set of recruiting targets. Everything from manufacturing on down to the one and two-person restaurant retail service providers that populate our downtown. Thirdly, product development. Uh, what we're doing to help, uh, property owners and, uh, building owners to develop the right kind of product at the right kind of time, uh, so that we're attractive to those folks, those industries that we'd like to bring to the Greer community. And then lastly, marketing, what we're doing to promote to decision makers, uh, that Greer is a great place, uh, to relocate, start up, or expand their business. And then to some, uh, direct-to-consumer marketing, Greer is a great place to spend your money and your time. We've added on to that, very fortunately, a couple of programs, uh, that you referenced. One, uh, is an entrepreneurship innovation program called the Platform at Greer. Uh, it's a, a five-part program, if you will, to help to build a culture of entrepreneurship and innovation in Greer. Uh, we're reaching both big businesses and small businesses who want to be innovative and entrepreneurial. And then lastly, we've just created a talent development program called This Is Greer. It's an opportunity for us to begin to recruit and retain, uh, the most talented, best people that both grow up here in Greer and are looking to relocate to the upstate from, from parts beyond, uh, to make sure that we've got a constant flow of folks to populate our talent pipeline, to fill jobs, and to buy houses right here in Greer. Thank you so much for your support.
Mr. Mayor, and with, uh, to, to Mr. Deaton's point, uh, he is a public-private organization and, and receives funding from a number of different sources, one of which is the city. We made some changes to how we did that several years ago, and you may want to remind council about how we do that. about how we do that on an annual basis.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yes, sir. The city has a formulaic way of funding the function of GDC, and it's tied to our business license revenue. They are, GDC, we give them seven and five-eighths, is that right, David?
Seven and eighth.
Seven and one-eighth percent of our business license revenue goes formulaically to them every year.
I want to give a shout out to our recreation department back there on the back row. I see you back there. And I just want to thank you for the job that y'all are doing, too. My son got to play Little League baseball for the first time this year, and he just had ball and really enjoyed that. Got to see all the hard work and the effort that y'all put into it and really appreciative of what you do. He had a really good experience. And I've seen from a lot of the pictures that you posted, a lot of the kids are really having a lot of fun. And I know the camps are coming up, and we're doing some things with rugby, and there's just some really unique and really good programming. And so, and your department's doing a real good job. Keep it up.
Counsel, the second and final reading of ordinance number 25-2022. Any additional comments? Discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move to the second and final reading of ordinance number 26-2022. This is an ordinance to amend ordinance 2-36 of the City of Greer Code of Ordinances. Action required in this regard? Mr. Mayor, any new or additional information in that regard?
Mr. Mayor, there is no new or additional information.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to receive. Submove. End of second. Floor is open for discussion.
I hate to say anything. I kind of looked at it, and I was kind of, 5,000, I just felt like 5,000 was a large sum. I did go back, and of course, I think the last pay raise that the council got was in 2016, was when it went into effect. And it was introduced at that time, and it was 4,000 at that time. Now, my feelings there on this is, I certainly, and the rest of the council may pro stuff at me, but I feel like that the mayor, you know, he certainly is more active in most of the things concerning the city. I have no problem with his rate of pay increasing. And I just felt like the 5,000 was a little much. I know it's not in the budget this time, and won't be in the budget until '24, but I just felt like, that was my feelings, and I just felt like I needed to express it. That's it.
Others?
Mind you, you can donate your salary in any bar with any.
Mr. Mayor, why did staff recommend this change?
This is in connection to what we feel to be just lagging in keeping up with surrounding municipalities, and this is keeping our council in parity with other similarly sized councils.
I will say, this is my 13th year on council, and I've expressed, you know, this, I've given this feedback to Mr. Mayor. And I remember when I started, our budget was, I believe we were debating the budget about 14 million. And obviously, tonight, I believe it was 38. I believe that's where we are. And so I do, I will say, in council's defense, there is a lot more that is required of us. There's a lot more time and energy that goes into the budgeting process. There's a lot more issues that come up that we have to discuss, and we do spend a great deal more time and give a lot more energy, or I personally do, to the city now versus 13 years ago. A lot's changed. And so I don't know, it's hard to give yourself your own salary and to figure out how valuable your time is, but I will say that the ask is a lot greater now, and we do have a lot more on our plate compared to what we used to.
Others?
I've seen some discussion online, not really anything too intense, but just acknowledging the interesting nature of, you know, us having to address this along the way when it is addressed. And I'll acknowledge that it is kind of an interesting dynamic, for sure. It's certainly, it's the first time we're addressing it since I've been on council. I guess my thoughts on the matter is, I do think it makes sense for us to stay in line with other municipalities of similar size, budgets, things that's going on. And the fact of the matter is, long after I'm here, I want whoever considers putting themselves forward for this role, I don't want, no one sitting up here is making a living in this role, right? We all love our city, we love our community, and we view it as service. That's certainly how I view it. All of us have other things that we have to do to be able to make our living, so none of us are making our living doing this. But the reality is, I don't want, I don't want in the future for economics to be the issue why good people don't consider putting themselves forward. And so I think it makes a lot of sense to keep addressing this very sensitively along the way, very humbly along the way. And it gives me comfort, I know this is guided by state law, it gives me comfort that frankly, we're 18 months out before this would even take effect. Frankly, I'll be up for election if, you know, if I run again before this would even take effect. So, you know, to split hairs over 4,000, 5,000, you know, at the end of the day, I think it is splitting hairs, but I think it's addressing something important to make sure that good servants are able to continue putting themselves forward for many years to come, you know, to serve in this role.
And I did mention that, and I think that it would be probably encourage more people to run for the office if the monthly, you know, payment was larger, possibly.
And they shouldn't do it for the compensation, and none of us do it for the compensation.
But I think it probably would, you know. What are, like, the averages, like, for Mahon and Simpson, the things that are...
I don't think we have it readily accessible, but I'll certainly be glad to provide it.
Well, no problem. I love it, since we're keeping in line.
Well, I did introduce you, it would put us more in line with Greenville in one of our emails, but they apparently have voted to raise theirs, and it'll take them up above what we're talking about. So it'll put us, I know, in second place in the county among the municipalities, but you also have to look at their budgets and, you know, their number of meetings. In some cases, they only meet once a month. So there's a lot of variables in there. So it's a little hard to compare apples to apples, but it does put us where we should be in regards to the cities and the municipalities, the municipalities in the county.
Others? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move on to new business. First item that's before us this evening is a quote summary for office furniture at 113 Berry Avenue. John Google Howard joins us for maybe, or maybe not.
I'll take it, Mr. Mayor.
For this discussion, and the administrator will bring us up to date on that bid.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we, as we've discussed in the past with the purchase of the Berry Avenue building and our work to get a permanent home for our engineering staff and ultimately possibly some other staff, we will need to be in a position to upfit not only the building from a construction standpoint, to make sure that the office furniture is available for engineering staff. What you have before you is a, is our, is a quote to furnish that building for our use at $50,912. The recommendation from staff is to award to Stevens Office Systems.
Counsel, the recommendation from staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion. End of second. Floor is open for discussion.
Although Stevens, they're not the, both quotes were really tight. At least, let's see, hold on a second.
Yes, sir, both quotes were very tight.
Maybe I'm looking at something incorrectly. Did I reverse the numbers? Stevens was 50,912.
913.
And Young is 50,075.
Yes, sir, but the different, the recommendation for the additional staff, or for the additional $800 or so was that the quoted level furnishings for, with the other vendor, we did not feel was equal to what was quoted by Stevens. So it's a staff recommendation that we go with this bid.
Questions? Discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move to the second item, first reading of ordinance number 24-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by CMC Group LLC located at 1103 Highway 14 by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of C2 for said property. Ms. Cotty joins us for that discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we have two annexation requests tonight. The first is a 1.29 acre parcel at the quarter of South Main. It is across from the Mutt's Restaurant, the Family Dollar, and then to the north is the recently approved Leo Living Cottage-style community. So here's an aerial of the site. This is the current zoning map. The two, again, the two parcels to the northwest are C2 already, and then again, that parcel is not shown as annexed, but that is the Leo Living Community. That's the DRD Cottage multifamily site on the other corner. This is the future land use map. It is located along a neighborhood corridor. This is a street view of the site. Planning Commission will hold a public hearing next Monday evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive ordinance 27-2022. Submove. I have a motion, and the second floor is open for discussion.
Any indication what the parcel may be used for?
We've spoken to the property owners a few times, and they've thrown out a couple of different ideas, so I'm not certain if they've landed on them. One was kind of a medical office facility, one was a smaller strip retail center. They have not submitted any plans for planning advisory committee or anything of that nature yet.
Others? Comments?
We're here, and that's, I mean, I can speak up for what we found.
Sure. Let's do this in a proper and orderly fashion, because I skipped over that. If you are the owner of the property or a representative of the owner of the property, would you please raise your hand? Okay. If you would like to address council, please come to the podium, that'd be fine.
Yes, we plan on having a real estate brokerage office. I'm a broker of 27 years in Greenville County, Sharon Bishop, Bishop Real Estate, and my husband is my partner, CMC Group. And we plan to have an established brokerage real estate office. Due to the fact that this area is booming, we feel like this is going to be an excellent location for us to grow our business and also provide the community with customer service. And my husband also is a residential home builder, so we hope to incorporate that also in with our real estate business.
Other questions?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Sometimes it takes a village to, it's great.
Others on council? Questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move on to the first reading of ordinance number 27-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Crown Properties LLC located at 200 J Street by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of R 7.5 for said property. Ms. Cotty?
Thanks. This is the second annexation request tonight. This is a 0.37 acre property located adjacent to the River Reserve subdivision. This is an aerial view of the property. This is the current zoning map. The darker gold that you see is DRD. Again, that's the River Reserve subdivision. The parcels up along the roadway, they look the same color on the map, but 200, 210, 216, and 220 are also R 7.5, so it's similar to the nature of this area. This is the future land use, traditional neighborhood and suburban neighborhood. And then this is a current street view of the property. It's my understanding that the developer for River Reserve has purchased the property, and they intend to run sewer and make some site improvements. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Record will indicate nobody sits up. With that, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Okay.
End of second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Second.
Comments? Questions? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am.
First reading of ordinance number 29-2022. This is an ordinance exempting disabled veterans, law enforcement officers, and firefighters as defined by SC Code 12-37-220B from the payment of municipal stormwater fees in the City of Greer. Mr. Syper joins us for that conversation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The ordinance that we bring to you tonight for your consideration references this state law that exempts these disabled qualified individuals for ad valorem tax. And it is only for the ad valorem tax, it does not extend to the municipal fees. Sharon West, the auditor for Spartanburg County, brought this to our attention and requested that we would, might consider this, extending the exemption for these individuals for our fees. And that's what this ordinance does. We feel that it is a good way to honor and recognize these individuals for their service, and certainly just a very small token of them giving, you know, of their, basically their lives being totally disabled, you know, to that service. So we're bringing this to you for your consideration.
With the recommendation from staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive. Submove.
Second.
End of second. Mr. Syper, do we have any way of knowing at this point what impact that has on those fees?
On the, just for stormwater, it's about $1,100. Very, very small impact to us.
Thank you, sir. Others?
So it's just, I thought you said it was just ad valorem tax.
The state law speaks to ad valorem tax, and that is already exempted through the county function as they bill our taxes. So we have municipal fees here that we provide to the county that they add to the tax roll, and these individuals, most of them think, well, I'm exempt from tax, but now I'm getting a tax bill that has, you know, a dollar number on it, and they're calling it... on it. And they're calling, you know, why am I being taxed? And then they find out it's a municipal fee, which is not exempted under state law. So we have to pass a law at the municipal level that would exempt those fees because it's a municipal law that is adding the fee to the tax. This is a municipal law to exempt these individuals for that.
How do we verify their qualification?
Under state law, they have to make application to the Department of Revenue. Has to be certified by the county auditor, and it has to be certified by their physician.
Is this just on their 4% house? Any other properties, right?
Right. Just the residence.
Others? Questions? Comments? Further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Last item of business for forth this evening is the first and final reading of Resolution 11-2022. This is a resolution pursuant to Section 4-1-170(c) in the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, consenting to the placement of certain property within the corporate limits of the city of Greer and a joint industrial and business park of Spartanburg and Cherokee Counties. Mr. Deaton joins us for that conversation. Floor is yours, sir.
Mayor and counsel, good evening. Excuse me. Rita Deaton with the Greer Development Corporation. Request for you this evening is to designate this property as a multi-county industrial park. As you might recall, this has become a bit of a matter of course with respect to most of our speculative development products within side privacy limits. This project is on DeYoung Road, the Abner Creek Logistics Center, approximately 183,000 square feet, $17 million capital investment. There is not a prospect currently attached to this particular project, but the idea is that this, along with the field of taxes agreement that will be adopted by the Spartanburg County group, will be an enticement for a company to locate. As you might recall, multi-county industrial park does a number of things. Paves the way for special source revenue credit, as well as providing enhanced jobs development tax credit for the ultimate project.
Comes with a recommendation from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Some move.
End of second.
Second.
Floor is open for questions. Comments? Discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Counsel, in executive session, we have four items to discuss this evening. I'll entertain a motion that we go into executive session.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into executive session to discuss two contractual matters, one pertaining to Project Chubbs, the other to Meridian Waste as allowed by state statute, Section 30-470A2. Also to discuss an economic development matter pertaining to project lineout as allowed by state statute, Section 30-470A5. And also a personnel matter pertaining to administration as allowed by state statute, Section 30-4-70A1.
Comes as a motion to hear a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, in executive session, we have considered four matters, two contractual matters, one economic development matter, and a personnel matter. We will need to take action in regards to one of those matters. So I'll hear a motion to come out of executive session. Some move. End of second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, before we move to the workshop, is there any additional business to take care of this evening?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to allow the city administrator to engage in a contractual agreement with Meridian Waste.
Comes as a motion to hear a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, at adjourned and regularly scheduled meeting, we will now move into a workshop in regards to the unified development ordinance.
All right. So this is a continuation of council's conversation at our last UDO work session. We started talking about overlays, but it was the end of a very long night as well, so we decided to come back to this conversation. So just as a reminder, and this is a table staff created, to just kind of go over what our overlays are now and then what the updates are for the UDO. So currently, we have the downtown overlay, and the proposed update is to keep as-is, but for the historic district only, and that's a very small area around Trade Street that we'll see on the next slide. And we do have a new downtown transitional overlay that's proposed for the rest of the area. That's currently under our downtown overlay, as well as a small enlarged area that was proposed by the Board of Architectural Review. And again, that is kind of a small expansion, and it's less strict than the downtown overlay, and it's very similar to what we're going to go over for the downtown entryways as well. We also had two different overlays for Highway 101 and Highway Transitional. We are proposing to kind of merge those, streamline a lot of those requirements, and then add and extend some corridors to form the downtown entryway. And again, that's on the map what you'll see, the gold. And then the red is the transitional, and then that little green square right in the middle is the historic. And then as far as the GIBC, that is Gateway International Business Center, in the UDO, we're proposing to remove that. It is pretty outdated and inconsistent with the underlying zoning districts. It was originally proposed when that whole area was really an office park or business center. Since then, most of the properties have already been developed, and we just don't think it's necessary anymore. We'll still have some of those properties under the downtown entryway that were captured by 101 as well. And then Highway 29 and Interstate 85 overlays only pertain to signs, so we are proposing to remove those and take care of those just in the actual sign ordinance. So just kind of streamlining again the number of overlays that we have, and again, not have different overlays for different corridors, just have one. It's easier to administer. It's also easier for a business owner coming in to just have one section to look in and know what they're getting themselves into. All right. So these are the overlays again that I mentioned, and we're going to go over each in a little bit more detail. And then, you know, again, this is a work session format. Please feel free to stop me, ask Brandon or myself questions. We can pull up the GIS map and look at existing overlays, whatever will help y'all with your conversation. So we are hoping to get some guidance on these proposed changes. Hopefully, you've all seen the overlay text that was attached in NOBIS. So again, just the historic district. This is set up by the State Historic Preservation Office, went through a very lengthy study, what, 2015? No. When was that? Earlier? 2008. So this is what created the downtown overlay in general, but it was and currently applies to a larger area. So again, we are proposing the strictest standards to stick with just the historic overlay.
Can you go back to that map?
Mm-hmm.
Can you make it even bigger?
Um... I will try. We can also pull up the PDF separately. We have those as well.
Well, the historic overlay, I did have a question. Is there any reason why the Gregory Store and that City Tire is not included? Because they were identified back in like 2018 or whenever we did that one report.
Oh, yeah. So that report is that with the Davenport and everything, the... So it was a survey, and so they recommended several changes, but it never moved forward. So I think that the actual historic district is very limited based on state historic preservation rules for what can be considered contributing and non-contributing. So that's why that area is really small, but as far as the larger downtown overlay, that could encompass any area.
What say does the individual have in regards to the ownership of the building, whether or not that their building is included or not included?
I don't think they do. I think we established the district.
Yeah, it's already established.
This one was established back in 2008, so...
Our historic district just mirrors what the national district is.
Is.
So when they made a change to the national district, we both...
We adopted it. So they can still make changes again, but they have to conform to these standards.
Can you pull that... Pull the map back up on...
Mm-hmm.
That's... I guess that's Rattle Street and Trade.
Yeah, it's Trade, Victoria.
So I guess they carved out, I guess the... Citizens Building Law. That's understandable. That was built back in the 80s or 90s. And then it just gets on down Trade Street to the CSX line? Is that right?
Yes. Mm-hmm. The boundary is the right-of-way for the railroad.
I was noticing the same thing, Riley.
That's kind of weird.
Yeah, but yeah, that is a steep one.
I mean, I'm sure we could bring out the 2008 study. They studied all of the buildings around it, and so I'm sure there's a reason why it was considered non-contributing.
Well, did they have to do this? Was it made based on the lots or the buildings? I mean, on...
Parcel lines.
The parcel. Okay. So that means down at Langford Electric, their warehouse is non-conforming. Actually, it is.
We can pull up GIS if you want to get some clearer picture of it like that.
Well, I mean, that's what it looks like.
It doesn't go across the track. Yeah, it doesn't go across the track. That's the first track.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, yes. Okay, I got you. I see. Yeah.
Yeah. So this has been established since 2008, and so we're just planning... Our recommendation, staff and Kim Lee Horns, is to keep the strictest existing downtown overlay with this district, not ruffle any feathers with State Historic Preservation Office. Most of this is already developed anyway, and so, you know, signage or replacement of windows or gutters or downspouts, we want to make sure we can keep that historic district.
Does the... And the mayor can verify that what I'm saying is true on the... For instance, the County Bank, when... That's in the historic area. Now, did the replacement of the windows and the doors, was that something that came from the state mandate or our mandate, or was it?
Because it was a FDIC facility, it was federal in state.
What I'm alluding to is the type of material, and for instance, their entry door had to be wood.
Mm-hmm.
And so that would still be the same case now?
I believe the entry door was a part of the SHPO.
What's SHPO?
Yeah, State Historic Preservation Office.
Another level of review beyond VAR. And SHPO, so what VAR basically referred to that case was they were going to let SHPO make final decisions because it went through a separate review because they were a A. I believe that's federal requirement. It's FDIC they have to go through.
So what do we require? I mean, I know we require things to look a certain way, but do we... Are we going to dictate what the windows and the doors are made from?
In this district, yes. We are planning to keep the...
I don't like that.
I mean, that is how we keep our historic district.
It allows for wood, aluminum, and metal windows. It just doesn't allow for the vinyl windows in the historic.
In the historic, just the small.
And the reason why is on our building, which is not in... And then on County Bank, County Bank put in a wood door. Before they even moved in, it was... Looked like it, what, several years old. Same thing with ours. We had to go through and do a bunch of stuff, but, I mean, can you use a fiberglass door?
We want to try to keep it as short as possible.
But why? Just because?
Just to give a massive refresher. Once you start losing certain percentages of your contributing building and materials, you lose that designation if they were to come to an audit.
Okay, so if you lose it, what happens?
They'd be ineligible for certain credits if they wanted to utilize... I think you'd want to have a conversation with the business owners down there. I mean, this was... This is a very established precedent, especially for this area. I mean, we are proposing to make the surrounding area a whole lot less strict than it is now. We would not regulate necessarily the windows, the doors, the certain gutters, or... We would still have some regulations for building materials and colors, but not to the strict standards that it is in this area. I mean, staff sees a lot of value to protecting the very historic kind of core of downtown. So...
I understand that, but, you know, a lot of the buildings that were in this, not necessarily they weren't built originally in Greer. I mean, they weren't when Greer was established. They were... They were second or third buildings. But regardless. So on the signage, they have to be wood, metal, or painted metal?
Mm-hmm. Which, again, the outer area, we're not planning to keep that same requirement. We've had a lot of businesses downtown suggest high-quality materials that look almost like the wood or painted metal that we've had to deny over the last several years. So again, the larger red area, there is an expansion proposed that was the recommendation of the Board of Architectural Review. And so that is this area right here. It's mostly residential, corresponding with that 2018 study that you mentioned, Mr. Booker. But so that, this red area, with the exception of that one expansion, is the current downtown overlay. So all of these really strict requirements are currently on most of this red area. So what we are proposing is a downtown transitional overlay that is less strict. So it does have some of the protections from the downtown overlay, but is a lot more flexible than the historic core in our current downtown overlay.
Such as?
So just for example, the current historic overlay applies to all facades, so every exterior of the building, and it limits the materials to brick with stucco used as an accent sparingly. These are just some examples that we've had trouble with in buildings trying to comply over the last couple of years. It stipulates that awnings and canopies have to be at a certain angle. They can't be flat. The canopy sides have to remain open. So if you have like an awning, it can't have like the flap on the side. It gets down to that level of detail. Signs, again, you mentioned, have to be wood, metal, or painted metal only. We have two color palettes that they can comply with. I believe it's Victorian and then what's Arts and Crafts or Craftsman. And then no accessory buildings are allowed. Again, it applies to all facades, and there's no type of variance or alternative compliance mechanism. Some of the other overlays that we have, such as Highway Transitional, allow for businesses to come with a plan to the Board of Zoning Appeals to, well, again, alternative compliance, to, you know, comply in a different way or prove that they're meeting the intent of the ordinance. There's nothing in the historic overlay. And again, I'm not... And again, I'm not sure it should. This was all very much vetted through State Historic Preservation Office at the time. So those are kind of the strictness. So that, for this larger red area, um. Yep, mm-hmm.
Accessory buildings, these?
Yeah, are not allowed.
What is that?
So like a storage building or, um.
Like a carriage house.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's, you know, which is considered historical.
Like an attached garage.
Well, no, this was, this is in the historic area, but, you know, how we've got, uh, the carriage house being used now.
Car ride food hall.
Yeah.
Typically, storage, um.
An off-site cooler.
An off-site cooler, anything that's not attached, that's a building. So structures are not the same, but like a detached garage or storage building are not allowed in the overlay right now. And the overlay right now is, you know, large. It encompasses a lot of property. So we have had some issues with that.
Go back to the red.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Which part of that is new?
So it is this part, which I apologize, it is kind of hard to see.
That's the new part.
That is the new part, expanded.
So do you have a slide that shows in that detail what the old district looked like? Because it looks like to me all they've added there is, I wouldn't call it affluent, but it's not.
It's the Davenport neighborhood. That's from the two thousand eighteen survey.
And I'm just curious, is, is there a, is there a historic criteria to what, to what's covered? I mean.
I mean, the, the survey recommended that it could be a historic district, and then it wasn't followed through. And so Bar recommended expanding the overlay to include that area that was identified in the survey.
Is the other side of Point Set Street included, like the rear mail area?
No.
That's a historic area.
I agree. This is the recommendation from Bar.
Victor included?
No.
That's a historic area.
Well, some of Victor Mills is, is included already.
What I'm saying is, what they've added here is just an affluent white neighborhood. They can afford to pay this price, you know?
Well, I think, I think the bigger issue is the use of the transitional overlay, downtown overlay and the, and the historic overlay. Because, you know, I've, I've talked to a number of people in, in that, in that area that you're referencing. And I, I think the, the overwhelming sort of consensus there seems to be that while there is some, some anticipation of preserving a sense of that community or that neighborhood, that, that doesn't necessarily mean one particular law, that there are other alternatives that may be workable. And I, and I think that's kind of what we're talking about here in terms of both the downtown and, and, and this, and then the, the traditional overlay. I know when, you know, these buildings were developing back here on Cannon, there was quite some discussion about the exteriors and the awnings and the windows and the doors and all those kinds of things. And, and, and it really, to me, it's sort of, you know, it kind of hearkened to this whole thing about we do have this, this very historical brick downtown that I think we want to protect in, in some regard, to, to Jay's comment, not, not be fanatical about it, be reasonable about it. But then, as we, as we be, as we grow beyond those, those bounds, there's this real opportunity for us to create a, a niche sort of of our own. Now, you know, this is kind of, we're getting into, you know, what the West Grable looks like as opposed to downtown Grable, and, 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 and that's kind of the difference that we're talking about. And I think that even in the neighborhoods, we're finding now that, um, that there's, that there's some sense that we need to be respectful of homes and areas that were some of the first built in, in, in Greer in the early nineteen hundreds. But there is a place for new housing in that area that is complimentary. And I don't know, I can't remember how we say it in our ordinance, but is, is in keeping with those other homes around it that may be different materials or different styles or, or whatever. And so I, I like the, the transitional piece of it and, and certainly shrinking that old sort of, you know, large, one large kind of encompassing overlay.
So what's?
Neutral primary color.
Excuse me?
What's a neutral primary?
So, sorry, it's probably just the, the way that I wrote it. I meant for the primary structure. So like the actual house color versus the door and the, um.
Okay, so what do you?
What do you mean?
Give me an example of a neutral primary color.
Um, beige or earth tones, grays.
So if somebody wants to paint their house a different color, it's not beige or?
Earth tones, kind of natural, yes.
They want to paint red.
Yeah, in this area that we're proposing, no. They could do accents that were bolder colors.
It's a valid question, because one of those popular things in downtown or east Nashville right now is painting your house black.
Yeah, that would be a neutral color. Well, um, it, it.
Certainly an earth tone.
Certainly. I, I'd have to look at the map again, but on, um. Oh, gosh, what street is it? It might, it's not, it, it's off of Main, um. What's the street right there where you've got the, the glass, the arc glass place? Going towards twenty, Fairview. I believe that's it. If you turn there, is, is that, is that East Fairview? Is it in the, that district?
I don't believe.
There is a red house there. Well, unless they painted it recently.
That's, that's on the line.
It's on the line?
Yeah. If you turn right, is, is the house on the left or right?
When you turn right, it will be on the left.
That's not in the district. That's, that side of the road is not in the overlay, according to this map.
I think that house is blue though. Yeah, I, I, but anyway, I mean, I just, now let's, look. I'll tell you what, let's do. I mean, there's, there's obviously going to be a lot of discussion about this and a lot of, a lot of in-depth kind of questions on this. For our general purpose tonight, let's, let's take note of things that, that, that may need further attention, but let's go ahead and, and move on through some of this if we can a little bit.
Sure, so just some key.
Let me ask you one thing.
Yeah.
If there is a, is a house in this expanded district now that would be non-conforming in color, if they wanted to repaint it, is that okay?
Yes, if it's the same color.
Color that it is now?
Yeah, touch up or repaint same color, yes.
But if they, if they want to change the color, they got to come before the board?
No, they wouldn't have to come before the board. Even now, we don't make people come to Bar. It's a staff-level approval, so.
And so if they don't, they paint it, and we don't like the color, then we can make them paint it again?
If we got a complaint, we would, and it didn't meet the code, they would get a violation letter.
So it's complaint group?
That is typically how our, how our code enforcement works right now.
Round and say, hmm, that's a yellow.
No. Yeah. I mean, I understand it's, it's a little bit controversial. This is just for the small area surrounding downtown. But it does sort of, you know, if someone wanted to paint their house rainbow or fuchsia, I think it'd be a different conversation than red. So if you guys feel more comfortable with primary colors, or if you just don't want to regulate it at all, that's okay too.
I know we need to move on, but what's the street in Charleston where?
Rainbow Road.
Rainbow Road?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, there's a place for everything.
Right, and is it here?
But they say that.
Yeah.
But I'm like you, you, you talked about signs the last time we were talking about this. We don't want, Jay doesn't want it to be just monochrome. You know, it, the signs are exactly the same. The colors are all in the same palette. Because then it just looks blah. To me, to me, it does. I mean, I, I don't know. I, that's, that's my opinion about it. And I don't think a lot of people in these transitional areas really want to have to get approval before they come paint their house or they decide to change the siding on it or something like that. I, I don't.
And I suspect if there was a public hearing and if those people were invited, they'd tell you that, they'd say, I'm damn well going to paint my house whatever I want to, whatever color I want, you know?
Well, when you're in some divisions, you have to give permission to, you know, paint different things.
That's a different problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but.
But it's, it's still, I mean, it's still a neighborhood.
Yeah, but it's the neighborhood, it's a neighborhood that you knew that it was like that going into.
Yeah.
This is something that, that we're saying, oh, brand new, we're going to, you can't paint your house red, so.
Yeah, so this was a recommendation from Bar. Staff does not have strong feelings about it. Honestly, the only reason we did veer towards supporting it was the outcry of the neighborhood when certain things were suggested in that neighborhood, and so many of them referenced the Brockman survey and wanted additional protections and regulations. So again, it's really council's decision on this one.
But what you're saying, the people that live in that area, they voice their opinion about what they want.
I mean, not necessarily these exact regulations, but we have seen them come out and force when things in their neighborhood have come to planning commission and council. And they have referenced the Brockman two thousand eighteen survey, so.
And I agree with that, and, but on, on the, on the other hand, back when some of that stuff was going on, I would communicate with some of them by email. And, and I brought up the, because I said, well, this needs to be in the historic, blah, 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 whatever. I said, well, do you want somebody to tell you what color you can paint your house? Well, no.
Exactly.
It, it's, it's, it's different when you don't want something, but then when they come and tell you, you, you know, when, when the man comes and tells you, you can't do with your house what you want to do, then that's different.
That it is. So just an overview of the transitional overlay, because we, I mean, we do, the staff does support it for the area that's not part of the expansion, just the existing, what is currently the downtown overlay that we're proposing to change to transitional and make it less strict. What is currently in the proposal only applies to facades that are visible from the right-of-way. So it wouldn't necessarily be the rear or even some of the sides. And eighty percent would need to be brick, stone, stucco, or wood siding. Staff also suggests adding hardy board and board and batten to those materials. But again, that's up to council. It does allow for different colors than just that, the, the two color palettes for the Victorian and Arts and Crafts. Again, they're neutral for the primary structure, which again, sorry for the way it's written. There is no such thing as a neutral, red, yellow, or blue. But so neutral for the primary structure, like the actual house or the actual shop building. And then if you had accents like shutters or a door or trim, those could be bolder, non-neutral colors, up to three. It does also have some transparency requirements for first floor that is non-residential. So that is just, you know, windows, whether it's a faux window or a real window. It does encourage parking to the side in the rear. It does allow accessory structures, whereas the original one did not. It does say that they should be in the rear and have a similar architecture and, and building materials to the primary structure. And then this is not in the draft, but staff does recommend adding an alternative methods compliance. As we mentioned, the highway transitional and some of our existing overlays has the option for someone to go to the board and kind of prove that they're meeting the intent, but they can't meet all the regulations to a T. And so we do think that that's an important addition to this as well. And so then our last, so we have some questions which we could go through, or we could move to entryway. So it's kind of up to you guys. You know, we have questions whether you're comfortable limiting that strict area to just the historic district. If not, do you want it, you know, two blocks out? Do you want to keep it as it is right now? Same thing with transitional. Are, you know, are there areas to remove? If, if council doesn't have consensus that that proposed expansion from Bar is necessary or a good idea, we can certainly cut that back out. There may be some other areas to remove, you know, on the other sides of the railroad tracks or other areas that, you know, you don't think are really considered downtown anymore. And then, you know, if not, do you want to see more of a transect? Do you want, you know, strict, less strict, even less strict? You know, how many layers do you want to see? So we have, you know, brought forward a proposal that we think meets, you know, stakeholder feedback that we've received, business owner feedback that we've received over the years. But ultimately, this is, this is council's will, so. We can talk about this, or we can move on to entryway. It's really up to you. It would be nice to have some consensus. I, you know, what we really don't want is for this to come forward for adoption, and then all this gets brought up again. You know, we'd really like some feedback from council, not a formal action, but some consensus of, yes, I like this, no, I don't like this, you're going in the wrong direction, right direction.
I think that may be a good review that we're going to tackle this evening.
Mm-hmm.
I think, I think questions that have been raised tonight indicate that there may be some appetite to, to, to limit these areas and to, to broaden the materials in some regards. I think one of the things that we, we have to think about as well too is, is the changes that are taking place in construction methods and in construction types. And, you know, I, I think immediately about vinyl windows. I mean, clad windows twenty years ago were, were not the broad that they are today.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I would not have, well, I personally do not have a problem with clad windows. I'm putting them in my house right now. So, I mean, you know, I think we need to be open to the idea that things have changed, that things change in time, and that, and that we always have to be sensitive to that. So I think this is a discussion that we need to have on, on some different level about where we want to go. But I think we're at least on the right track. While the size and the shape and the quantities may be different, we're, we're not. I don't think we're too far off. I mean, I'm not, I'm speaking for myself, but that's kind of the sense of where I'm gauging this conversation is, is going this evening. So give us, give us some time to talk amongst ourselves. Who was it that said that? So, uh, and try and figure it out a little bit more.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so the last overlay that we have, again, as I mentioned in the beginning, we currently have, um. So we have a Highway one oh one. We also have highway transitional. So the biggest factor here is we're going to merge them. So we've taken both overlays, kind of struck things that seem too strict or out of date, and kind of combined them to be one corridor overlay, just called Downtown Entryway. And so here is this map. I will say the map that, that the consultant gave us, the boundaries are a little bit further than staff had initially proposed, so we definitely would like some feedback from you guys. I know especially the point set, whether or not it needs to go all the way to Wade Hampton was one of the things that Brandon and I were discussing a lot today. I think we've, we've talked before about where that cutoff is, whether it's Memorial, whether it's Middleton. I think you guys have mentioned a couple of different roadways in other conversations, so. But again, this is very similar to the transitional overlay. But again, this just extends, and this is just parcels on either side of the road leading into the city. And again, it does extend Main Street a little further than it currently was under an overlay. Lion Street 101 and Point Set. It also added some of South Main Street and then it removed 101 south of J. Byrne Smith. We just felt like that area didn't need as enhanced protections as it moves towards more industrial uses. So, I mean, our questions really are just whether you're comfortable combining those into one overlay and whether you have any concerns with the boundaries. And again, it doesn't have to be an exact answer, but just sort of a, are you comfortable with the direction it's heading? Would be nice to know. And then again, we would love some feedback about removing those other overlays as well.
So what are the restrictions in that?
So the corridors are very similar to the transitional. So they will be kind of similar to this with the exterior building materials. Those regulations are only for the facades that face the right-of-way. They're also 80% brick, stone, stucco, wood. They have the same colors. I think the differences between the two lie with transparency requirements and some of the parking reductions that they can request. But for the most part, they're very similar.
Like I've had reservations about the I-85 overlay. I'm just not clear how much we want or need particular inflows in that regard.
Yeah, I think, right, it's a sign restriction.
It may not last for like 70 to 80-foot tall signs. The big interstate signs is basically what it's.
Okay. I think the one thing that I would consider in some, in some of these areas that we have talked about is, for me personally, you know, I think about entryways a lot, particularly as I'm going to other communities and how transitional over time those entryways can become. I mean, you know, Lawrence Road, you know, what a gateway that was to Greenville at one point, 925 or 30 years ago. And now, you know, it's, it will get the complete facelift through the efforts of the people that are promoting the trail and through Verde. But nevertheless, that was not the most pleasant way to come into the city of Greenville. And I think the same thing for us, maybe on a, maybe on a slightly smaller scale. I know we've talked about this over the years, but Point Set, we've got some places along Point Set that are really disappointing in terms of an entryway for the city. And I think we need to be mindful of that, not necessarily to anyone in particular's detriment, but there is a, there is a development on Point Set that I kick myself every time I ride by that we allowed some buildings to be moved onto it. Yeah. You laugh. I voted against it. I just think, inherently, I think there are some areas that we, that we need to realize that they are, they are entries to the city and we need to recognize that. Now, whether or not we go all the way to the Verde Smith, I think that's debatable. I think for some of those other areas, we do need to be attentive.
And the criteria for this new entryway overlay, I mean, I see you got a portion of Point Set that's on the south side, but it's not across the street on the north side. I don't understand that. And the corners of Wade Hampton and North Main are covered.
Yeah, I think, I think those overlap with the transitional overlay, so we'll show it to you with this. So it's hard to see the.
I guess, I don't understand the criteria that is used to do this. That's my hangup. You go out, you go out, further out Point Set Street, beyond Lion Street, and the whole left-hand side of the road's covered, but the right-hand side's not. And then you go out a little bit further and there's one block or one section out there. I don't, I don't know the rationale of this.
Are you talking about East Point Set?
Yeah.
Well, I think where it's colored is.
It's our jurisdiction.
So, and at least with, with the East Point Set stretch right there, why there's that big gap is those are, those are yet to be annexed.
Correct.
Why is the other side of the road not part of it?
Well, because it's so heavily industrial, I would say on, at least up to where the inland port is, and then as you're coming back, you've got railroad tracks that.
I mean, it might just be a mapping error. The intent is for both parcels on both sides of the road that are in the city to be part of the overlay.
Well, the only houses you have in these points that are like about where that gap is on the right, you know, and you think they're in the city limits. And then the rest of that's just railroad right-of-way coming into town.
I suspect some of those houses are actually in the right-of-way.
Yes, some of them are. Yeah, there's businesses too. Someone recently wanted a new storage building and I was like, well, technically that's not even on the parcel. You're in railroad right-of-way, so you're going to have to get their permission. We're not very happy with that response. So what I'm hearing is maybe these extend a little bit too far and that maybe they need to be cut off a little closer to downtown.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, I don't believe in the four criteria as you used to establish. You're coming in, you come in on 14 and before you get to West Road, almost the whole left side is in this thing and almost the whole right side is not. And I realize there may not be, there may be some parcels that aren't part of the city right there.
Right.
I know all Point Set Street, West Point Set's in the city and you got one whole side almost from start to finish in there. And then starting just past Memorial Drive at Morrow Street, there's nothing.
Are you talking about in the red area where the red and the yellow meet right there at Memorial?
This is in both districts, yeah.
Yeah, and I think what, what I heard Ash to say is that it's not, that side of the street is not yellow because it's already covered in the transitional overlay. So they didn't overlap the colors, the same requirements would exist or be tighter in the red. Is that right?
They are a little tighter in the red.
And I was saying that the red wasn't there, Mr. Bettes. The way I understood this is that that yellow would extend all the way into town on both sides of Point Set.
Even some of those houses right along there are on commercial property.
On Point Set?
Those houses are going to be dead or gone.
Well, it'd be hard to find a piece of property from Pennsylvania all the way into almost Main Street on that side of the road that's not commercial.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, I mean, anything that's existing will be considered legal non-conforming. So this will mostly apply to new or redevelopment.
And the entry would apply to residential and commercial?
Yes. That is the intent. But that is up for debate as well, like everything, so.
Tell me if I'm thinking correctly, that the purpose for overlay district is so things look the same.
I think it can be interpreted that way, but the purpose is to apply higher standards for development regulations. So that certain key areas.
When we say, when we say you can use certain colors or certain building material, you say that's a higher building standard.
Well, I mean, colors, materials, parking standards, transparency requirements. I mean, it's all part of a package. So again, you can pick pieces. If you're not comfortable with regulating materials or colors, then that can come out. But if, you know, having parking to the side and the rear versus having rows of parking in front of the building.
And I understand that, but I guess what I'm getting, and that would be for non-residential and you were saying residential has to. So my concern with overlays and what we're, I know intentions are good, but a lot of times, especially nowadays, you see markets driving the way things look and they look good. You know, getting a new apartment complex right here and it's not going to be, I don't guess it could, I mean, it is in over, one of the overlay districts.
It's in the strict overlay right now.
But we may change this, right? No, no, no.
Staff did not get to review the development agreement. I'll leave it at that.
But the change is going to make, and which is fine. I mean, I just think that.
Well, and that is also why staff thinks it's important to add an alternative means of compliance.
Yeah, I agree with that. I just, I just, for our sake, and I know you guys put a lot of time and effort in it and you want some feedback from us and that you don't, because you said, well, you don't get to be proposed and then we sit here and tear it apart and do things.
Well, I want you to tear it apart. I just want you to tear it apart now versus at adoption.
But I don't, I don't, I don't know that, you know.
Not tonight. I mean, I don't want it to get to adoption.
I, I think though, that's what's probably going to happen is when it comes before council. Because we have a reputation of just doing that just because we want. No, it's not a bad thing. I mean, I've seen ordinances come up for review and we just go beyond that. I mean, and I think that's kind of our job, but I don't want to, I mean, I have some concerns. I just don't like to, I just don't like limiting a lot of choices people may have. I mean, I, I understand and it's, we, you have to at some point, but.
Yeah, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, this applies to a very small portion of our city. And the portions that it does apply to have been identified as our downtown and then our entryways into downtown. Beyond that, we really are not proposing any overlays. Now, I will say in the cluster development regulations, if they want certain densities or certain bonuses, then they can use higher quality building materials or some other things to get that. But this will be the area that we have identified as, you know, we want higher quality building and development standards for site development and the actual building.
And I get that. I think most of us do get that. The problem is, my heart is a very small part of my body, but I want it to be right.
That's true, yeah.
And so I think the issue that we're all struggling with, or at least I'm struggling with tonight is what is the appropriate limit and scope of what we're trying to do and how do we apply it? Because I can see both sides of it. I want to be strict enough that we get a quality product. On the other hand, I don't want to be so strict that we don't have somebody that has a good idea and a, a new means of doing things to not be able to apply that either. So.
Yeah, I agree with that. I, I mean, I do, I hope that, you know, we said from the get-go that the UDO, I expect that we will have amendments on a biannual cycle, if not quarterly, as we implement this and see what works and what doesn't. I mean, I think using the consultant that has done work in other areas, we've looked at best practices for overlays. And we've really just strived to give you something to react to that we hope does meet the intent of what you just said. That's what we wanted to do too. So, you know, if there's certain elements that are, whoa, that's way too far or that doesn't go far enough, you know, we wanted to kind of blend what we already had because what we already had is a lot stricter in different ways. You know, they get down to like pitch of roof to a certain ratio in some of these overlays. We're, we're not wanting to get to that. So again, we're trying to strike a balance. We've given you something to react to and again, I know you, you don't want to rip it apart now, but I kind of hope you do.
I had one thing of what the mayor said and I agree with what he said, but you know, you have to ask yourself, what are, what is our purpose in doing this? And if you say, well, we want things to look better, is that one of the purposes that, while we're doing this?
Sure, to preserve the integrity of our downtown.
Okay, so what I'm talking about are our entryways coming into downtown. So I think one of the things that you have to ask yourself, if we, let's just take Point Set, 29 all the way to, to Main. If, if, if everybody, if it was new development, it all came in there and everybody tore down, rebuilt to these standards, is it going to look any better? And my question is, one of the ugliest things on Point Set and on Wade Hampton is utility lines. And on Point Set, we got our share of those, I mean, both sides. And we're not going to do anything with those. So do I?
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, but at the same time, this is something that the city does have control over and there are some things that we don't.
No, I understand, but I think that's just one of the questions I ask myself. Well, is it just because we say you've got to build one way and look one way, does it add to the area? Does it meet that goal, which is, you know, it's a, you know, does it meet it or does it not? And, or are we? And are we just causing people to spend more money, you know, just because? So.
One area I would like to consider adding is that SC 357 Arlington to 29. I think there's some good opportunities for that downtown entryway to be utilized.
Okay.
And that's, here again, to Riley's point, it's what you just said. Why wasn't Arlington even considered? Because that is, that is a major entryway when you talk about number of vehicles coming into town.
What were the boundaries, just in general, of the current downtown district? Since you changed it, how far out did it go?
You mean the entryway or the downtown?
No, the downtown historic district, the one that exists now.
So the downtown overlay is pretty much the red as it's shown, except the area that I showed you was expanded near Davenport. That is the existing downtown overlay, which again is very strict. So, and again, these overlays, most of what you see in the gold are existing overlays for Highway 101 and highway transitional. But we've streamlined them, made them a little less strict in some ways, stricter in others, but have one kind of consistent regulation for all of our entryways. But again, we're happy to add some entryways. These were, you know, identified where we've had gateway signs, where we had current overlays, and then we did again add some on South Main. But it was also, you know, something to react to. We could, you know, we spent hours deciding whether the boundary is Middleton or, gosh, what's the other road? I'm blanking now because it's nine o'clock, Memorial. So I mean, you know, we can spend an hour going back and forth on that, so.
So for instance, we're not just talking about buildings that front those roads. Because if you look at the overlay district on 14 coming in to downtown, at West Road, we've got the entire neighborhood
It was laid out in a parcel.
So it's a parcel. It's any parcel that touches either side. So it does extend pretty far in that one case.
So if you look, Mr. Ebbert, right there, where Bunkham and 14 and West, that whole area of property that's owned by
Oh, sorry.
New Spring and the hospital right there in that long piece there.
So this is here because it's a parcel. I mean, we could cut off the overlay 200 feet on either side of the right-of-way if
And so if this was in place, and the town home development was not built, but just came, so would all of those units have to comply?
Just the ones facing the right-of-way. Visible from the right-of-way. So the backs or the fronts of that one section along.
So 14 and what other, what other, that would be facing?
Visible, so from the right-of-way. So the building that you see from the right-of-way.
14, is West Road considered being visible?
Yes.
And then Mitchell?
Yes, so if it's a right-of-way or a corridor, yes.
And then what about, so the ones on the back on James Road?
So technically, yes, unless we want to limit it to certain corridors. Like we could limit it to Highway 14. Or again, instead of taking the whole parcel, we could just put like 100 foot on either side or something, instead of just grabbing the parcels. That is how our current overlays are done now. So that's, I mean, for ease of mapping, it's lassoing it into GIS, but
So was this in the downtown entryway overlay when that parcel developed?
I do not believe this stretch was in an overlay. This is the one portion that we kind of added versus we extended some of the others. So let me see if I can, can we get GIS? I want this one. And this one. Oh, sorry. I'm really bad at the technology part of this. We've got it on GIS.
Yeah, I told council we'd limit this to an hour, so we're close. So let's, let's plan on continuing this discussion in some form or fashion. I think it's going to be best in that regard. Some offline conversations as well as
Sure, so these are the existing overlay corridors right now. So we again cut off the 101 south of Jacob and Smith. So this kind of area, and then we extended South Main that was not on there. And then we extended a little bit on Point Set and East Point Set. So I guess what would help you for the future conversation? We can work with our GIS coordinator. Would you like to see an overlay of the overlays? Would you like to see, you know, what existing and proposed in a different color, kind of like we did for the other ones? We just want to make sure when we do continue the conversation, you know, you have every resource that you need to help with that decision-making. So if there's anything you think would help, you know, please let us know. And you could think about it, so.
I think my only issue is that if I'm a property owner, I would like to be told that I'm being put into this. If I'm not already in it, and I'd like to know the restrictions. Instead of waiting for that day when I go to the city and say, hey, I want to paint my house barn red.
Yeah. So we will have to do a mailing to the entire city with the zoning map. So they, people will be getting notified that we're updating the zoning map. Now, whether or not they choose to go on and check their property, that's another story. But we will be doing a mass mailing with the zoning map. Because we will be adopting a new zoning map with the UDO.
One of the things that would help me, because, and I know y'all have got all kinds of information you're trying to feed us. And, you know, we're not in an environment where we can debate and vote and things like that at workshop. But it would be helpful, just for instance, these overlay districts, you know, all the maps, and then the regulations, the proposed regulations that's going to go along with them. And then that makes it easy to say, okay, I've got issues with this, this, and this, but I like this, this, and this.
Okay.
I mean, because, you know, we, and I know we all get rained at, and we just want to move on. And so we'll take that up next time.
So I mean, we've sent the regulations twice through Novus. Do you want them via email? Would you like us to print you copies? So they've been on Novus twice with, as part of the meeting materials?
On this? On this agenda?
On the workshop, there were overlay maps and the text that goes along with it in your packet.
So you didn't have any of your background materials for any of the regular meeting agenda stuff either?
Yeah, no, I had that. But when I went to open the, for the UDO workshop, you clicked on it, and then it came up, so it's not found.
Okay, well, the original one that got postponed because it was so late, the materials were on Novus that time and this time. So I am happy to email you copies individually. I'm happy to print them for you. We can print copies and bring them, I mean, we do it for some of our planning commission members.
That's what I'd like.
Let's do it.
Yeah, we'll back it up with that.
Absolutely. So we will get you maps, text, and some overlay of overlays next time. Does that sound good? Well, thank you all for your time and direction tonight. We appreciate it.
Before we wrap up, anything else?
I think the one definitive thing that we said was Mr. Booker wants the 357 as an entryway. I think that's
We have some consensus head nods. Okay, great. I think that's a really good addition.
Thank you for your time and for your
Oh, your work.
Work.